Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Alrighty. Prior to council meeting today, we have a public hearing. If there's anyone here to speak on the public hearing, and that is closing a portion of the alley located in block 18, Eureka Heights, addition number four, between West 13th and Lee Northwest. You here to speak on that?
Four.
Speak for it. Is anyone else here to speak on this matter? Okay, if not, Ms. Roberts?
Readings. I thank you for the opportunity to come before you and speak on this matter of closing the alleyway between 13th and Lee over to 13th and Grant. This is an opportunity for those adjacent petitioners that's listed in your package to enhance the community by cleaning up the alleyway and giving access to public assistance at any given time. So we ask that you would support this issue and move it forth so that we can beautify community.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here to speak on the matter of closing the alley located in block 18, Eureka Heights, addition number four? I'm sorry, did you say you were speaking?
It's come to my attention that Waste Management has stated they would not like to have this alley closed. If you will just give the city attorney and I a chance to get with David Poe with Waste Management to find out what's his opposition and if... Because usually when a utility says that they don't want it closed, they will allow it to be closed contingent to it being remaining a utility easement. So, but I didn't speak with him on this, so I haven't spoken with him.
He made the request to...
He paid tomorrow.
He did, yeah.
We indicated that he did not want it closed.
Okay.
And so I hadn't spoken with him and she hasn't either to find out what his opposition is and if he would be willing to close it contingent to it being remaining a right-of-way utility.
Alright.
Senator Bluff?
Yes, ma'am.
I find it that it is quite interesting that at this late hour date and time, you've had already two readings, and this is the last reading, that a utility company, a waste management, would come forth to request not to be closed. There's no utility in the zone in which we're seeking to close. The public access to the sewer line and the waste line is over on the opposite side of 13th and Lee. Clear access. There's no hindrance in this access for public utilities whatsoever. The neighbors have also stated that this is... The petitioners have also stated that we will leave this at a point where if a public utility would need to come in, they certainly would have access. Our only goal is to clean it up, remove the debris, keep it at a level where it can be cut and mowed as if it is a lawn. So I would appreciate that opportunity. You at your third reading, I ask that you not delay this any further. Let us move forth with beautification, waste management. If they had opposition, I would think that they would be present. Thank you.
Ms. Roberts, let me ask the question. Is there... Is anything preventing you guys from cleaning it now if you want to clean it? Why do we have to close it to clean it?
We want to close it because in closing it, you have individuals on one side of the property and individual on the opposite side of the property. So therefore, one side of the property would gain five feet and the opposite side of the property would gain five feet. I, as an individual, we don't want to be in a position whereas one side is clean and the other side is not. We want the entire alleyway legible and a level enough for anyone to be able to go in and out. We suffer currently with a lot of rodent in that area, and unfortunately, this is the season for copperheads, and we're constantly spending dollars throwing out preventative measures to keep snakes and rodents from embarking upon our current property into our homes. So therefore, it is our opportunity to clean it up, to try our best to eliminate as much rodent as possible.
Ms. Hill? Do you have a question?
Yeah, not her. I have a question of Alderman Steps. As chairman of planning and the government, I see your concentration over there.
Right.
Okay. What would be... I'm not against it.
Right.
As a matter of fact, I'm for it. I support it. What would be your recommendation in terms of what waste...
What would be my recommendation?
Let me... She has...
Oh, I'm sorry. I don't have any opposition, as I'm sure the city attorney doesn't either, to the alley being closed. The only problem that I have, and let me explain this, we've gone through a transitioning phase because street and alley closings have come away from the planning commission and are with the city attorney's office now. They're transitioning into the process of what should be done when you get ready to close a street or alley. I didn't find... Because I'm not the one who does these checks anymore, it's not with my... With me. The city attorney's office does. Now, I found out on Friday from the city attorney's office employee in just conversation that she got a utility check back that was said, "No, we do have and we will use this alley in the future." So, and that was from David Poe. And I just asked the attorney when it was read here for the... When I saw that it was being read for the third time, it clicked in my head to check with her, "Did you all speak with David Poe?" Because I told her, "Employee, you need to call David and find out what his... Why he's against it and if there's any way he would move forward with it." But they didn't. Because they're still transitioning and doing this the proper way, okay? So that's the thing. And we have no problem with it being closed, but because there is a utility company that has opposition, we want to make sure we cover all our bases with why.
One...
And as far as cleaning the alley goes and using the alley, alleys now are the responsibility of the adjacent property owners.
Right.
If it's a 10-foot alley, it's your responsibility on either side of the alley to maintain it. So there's nothing stopping adjacent property owners at this point from doing what they want to do with the beautification of it and keeping it clean. You just don't own it. And possibly within the next... By the next meeting, we'll have this straightened out and you can move forward and now own that five feet. But there's nothing stopping with the cleaning of the alley at this point. It's in ordinance now that the alley is the responsibility of the adjacent property owners.
Mayor and council, we, the petitioners, have followed all of the proper...
How many petitioners do we have?
Um... I think it's... Before I leave my train of thought, we have followed all of the proper procedures and protocol to have this alley closed. We have paid, it is paid fully. The check is in the bank, is in the city. It's been over two months since you have been paid for this petition. It's eight that's listed and signed. We have copies of it. We followed all of the procedures...
Is that the property owner?
Yes.
Why are they not cleaning it already?
I think you all are focused so much on cleaning, and it's not so much on...
Why is it not...
May I finish?
Yep, that's your...
It is not so much the focus of cleaning it. It is clean. However, we want to get it to a level whereas we can go in there and improve it by putting in dirt to fill potholes, to put in curbs so that it'd be easy to roll into the back of there if one needs to. That's our effort to do that. So in terms of clean, it is clean. It's just not clean to a point that you're able to walk in as if it is on carpet, like my lawn. So if I wanted to walk out on my lawn, we want that type of beautification that exists with our adjacent properties. We have followed all of the proper procedures.
Yes.
We all are professionals. No slight. We all go through transitions. Totally understandable. But when we go through transitions, we should know as managers, as the responsible parties, for following through on proper protocol and procedures to see that an action is carried out to its fullest point. We, the petitioners, we have met those. You set forth some demands, some requirements, some regulations, and we have met those. And we ask that you not delay this. We ask that you move forward. I would say once again, if Waste Management had any opposition, there were two things that I would think a company of that magnitude would present. Would present, one, in writing, two, are in present to come and speak before you as the public... You set a public hearing. They should have been here to speak on their opposition and not staff speak on the opposition for that company.
Thank you. Before we do, Mr. Steps was getting ready to speak, then you were. Then, Ms. Brown.
Do it when it comes up for the ordinance. I mean, that's when that should be... We've heard them. That's all the speakers. The rest of the discussion will be at ordinance time.
Okay, it's vote time.
Okay.
Not necessarily. I want to ask either councilman, councilwoman Roberts or Ms. Hill, if it's closed, does that mean a fence or something is up? Okay, because I...
At the time that you close it, if it becomes the property of the adjacent property owner, if they want to put a fence in there, then they could unless it's written into the ordinance that it must be maintained as a utility easement and utilities have the right to go through. That's what we need to know from David Poe, is are you asking that a utility easement be maintained or are you just in direct opposition? You don't want it closed at all. If he says he doesn't want it closed at all, then you all should not close it because there is a reason why he needs it open.
And they would share that reason with you.
They would.
Okay.
And I'm sorry, I... The process, we've changed...
Okay, excuse me. No, we're not going to speak on this matter anymore. We're not going to speak on this matter anymore.
I know, but we're talking about Waste Management. Waste Management don't even go into alleys.
Waste Management or waste water?
Waste Management.
They don't go into alleys.
No, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. It's waste water.
David Poe or waste water?
Yeah, I said David Poe.
He said Waste Management.
Yeah, I did sorry.
I was at waste water.
Okay.
Okay.
It's Waste Management. Waste water.
Waste water.
David Poe, that's why.
He's with waste water. Okay. Alright, thank you, ma'am.
It is in writing. You have the memo. He filled out a memo and sent it back to your office.
Oh, there's a memo here?
Yeah, there's a memo.
I don't have a copy of the memo with me, and I offer my apologies, Ms. Roberts, as well. Our office did receive a fax on Friday as it related to Mr. Poe. We did not contact them. We are learning what the procedure is. Initially, it was with the planning commission, and now we've assumed that responsibility. And when it came in, we did not call them to get any justification for why he objected to the closing. So we will do that, and I think it would be in the best interest if the city would just... If we could pull the ordinance for until the next council meeting and then until we find out from Mr. Poe what would be appropriate or what his objection is.
Well, in his memo, would he not have stated his objection?
We don't know. We haven't seen the memo as of yet. We will come...
Why would you not get it and have it here for the public hearing?
Ms. Roberts, we will come and address this matter in the presentation of proposed ordinances. We'll do that. Thank you very much for your time. Thank you, ma'am. Okay.
One remaining question. Should the council deem not to close it, we will be reimbursed of our following things?
I don't know that. That's the city attorney. But we'll address all that and have answers for you. Okay. Pardon me? Okay. There's no one else here to speak to this matter? Hearing, I'm seeing no one. Hands up. Hand up. This public hearing is closed. Thank you. We have no speakers before, and we have one speaker after. After council meeting on a non-agenda item. I call this meeting of the Pine Bluff City Council, October 15th, 2012, to order. We have a roll call, please.
Alderman Hope, present.
Alderman Brown, here.
Alderman Aestley, here.
Alderman Step, here.
Alderman Walker, present.
Alderman Boyd, here.
Alderman Brown, here.
Alderman Mads, here.
Each of you have a copy of the minutes from our October 1st meeting. I'll entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded that the minutes of October 1st be approved as presented. All in favor of that motion, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
And alright, the motion carries eight zero. We're going to move into our committee report. Ms. Hookum, ordinances and resolutions, please.
Ordinances and resolutions met prior to the meeting. We're going to complete number one, read number two the second time, number two through four the second time, number five, six, and seven the first time, and complete all resolutions. And that's the end of ordinances and resolutions.
Eight is actually still in committee, though.
Oh, right. Okay, thank you. Number eight will still be in the committee.
Thank you, sir.
Pardon?
He just stepped out. He'll be right back. Yes, sir. No, it's in committee. It will stay in committee.
Oh, eight, two?
Yes, eight is.
Okay.
And seven?
We're going to read seven the first time and then send it to...
Okay. Alrighty. Was that it, Ms. Hookum?
That's it.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Brummett, Ways and Means, please.
Yes, mayor. The Ways and Means Committee met prior to the meeting. All members were present. We considered a budget adjustment request from the police department, fund community support programs through the end of the year. We're going to do that from under their budget, because they're under budget on the group insurance, repair auto funded from auction and sale revenue of equipment. Parcing a vehicle because one was totaled in an accident, and part of the money is reimbursement from insurance, as you see, the balance coming from all of these payments, the excess money that the company provided for the purchase of the auto. So we've got $5,000 for the support program expense, $7,372.40 for repair and maintenance of a car auto, and a purchase of an auto for $24,189.88. I move to accept this budget adjustment from the police department.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded that a budget adjustment to lean. Did y'all ever toll it a moment?
We did.
Huh? Alright, well, let me just handle it this way. A budget adjustment to fund community support programs through the end of the year will be funded from under budget, budgeted group insurance, which has a credit, above credit for the year. Repair auto fund, repair auto will be funded from auction and sale, sales revenue, and a purchase auto fund from the insurance reimbursement and auto lease payment. Okay. Each of you have a copy of this particular budget adjustment? If there are any questions, let us know. If not, all in favor of this motion, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposes? The motion carries eight zero. Thank you.
Mayor, I move that the bills that the city owes be paid.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded that the bills of the city be paid. Excuse me. All in favor of that motion? Let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Alrighty, the motion carries eight zero.
That concludes our report.
Thank you, Mr. Brummett. We're going ahead to economic community development. Alderman Walker?
Mayor, I do not have a meeting, but I did want to share with the council, if you would pass it down, if you probably passed it down, I would appreciate it. The national leader city that I have talked to, well, Mr. Shapiro and I have been missing each other for a while, but I did get in touch with him, and they have a free prescription discount card that provides an average saving of 23% off a retail price of prescription medication, and there's no cost to the city. And it's for residents who are without health insurance are the ones that have a prescription that's not covered by their insurance. And I did, and it's used by most pharmacies. In fact, I called the pharmacies that is in our area just to be sure, and they all do honor the card. And the way it works, once the city signs up, there's no cost, and they will send usually 10% of the city's population, up to 5,000 cards. And they will send the cards, and the cards will be at city hall or wherever, you know, it's deemed that they be. And you can put them at health places as well, to say if you have a doctor's office and you want to take a few there. And then they just start using the card, and there's no cost to the city. So after everyone have a chance to review it and read it, I will... Maybe we can address it at the next council meeting, and then at that point, we can sign up. And he said usually it takes about eight weeks before everything is completed.
I think it should go to the proper community and then admin.
Admin?
I'd ask her to give one to Vicki, let her look at it.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Walker. Okay. Next, we have public health and welfare.
But I just want to just encourage our citizens to join their local neighborhood watch program to help, you know, our mayor and city council and our police department to help reduce crime by working together with us. I think our local neighborhood watchers deserve more attendance and more people, young and old, just get involved with us if possible.
Okay, thank you, sir. Alderman Boyd, Public Works.
Mayor, your report, other than the fact that we need to schedule a meeting for a couple items we need to address, if it's okay with the committee, perhaps next Tuesday, 10:30 a.m.?
Next Tuesday, been the 23rd.
23rd. Yes, fit, Ms. Walker?
At 10:00.
10:00 or 10:30, which one is best for you?
10:30.
10:30, okay, 10:30.
Alright, let the records reflect. October 23rd, Tuesday, 10:30 a.m., Public Works Committee meeting in the mayor's conference room. Thank you.
That's it, ma'am.
Thanks, sir. Development and planning, Alderman Steps.
Mayor, we had a meeting, and the item that came before us was the closing of the street and some elevated houses that should be demolished. And out of that meeting, the committee had recommended to do pass on the closing of that street. And I'm going to continue to support that because that's what we needed in committee, and we had our options to support people to come forward. So I'm going to stand by the recommendation that the committee made and I'm going to put it in pass. And also, I guess we'll wait on those people to get to that.
Okay.
That's the end of my report, ma'am.
Alright, thanks, sir. Traffic and aviation?
No report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Mr. Aestley, administration?
No report, ma'am.
Okay. But you said you have asked Vicki to take the lead on this particular...
I'd like to give it to Vicki to let her look.
Look at it, and then we'll have a committee meeting?
And I thought it was something that first, I thought it was for the, like, for the city employees, but it's not. It's for people that do not have any type of prescriptions. So I don't know exactly what...
It's for the citizens of Pine Bluff.
Well, I mean, it's not... It's for people who don't have insurance, and all our people have insurance, but I mean, it doesn't... It's not pertaining to our employees.
No.
So I don't know how to proceed on it exactly. So, I mean, other than us backing it somehow or another, it would be fine. Because it's... But it's... I thought it was when first... When it's first thought, I thought it was for everybody, our employees and everybody to help, but it's for people that doesn't have any prescription, any insurance at all to help with their prescriptions, so...
Well, Ms. Cottaway, I'm going to ask the young lady in your office to probably take the lead on this and do some research on it for us and report back to the council meeting, to the council.
Before we can move with it.
If you would, please, thank you. Okay. Administration, Alderman... I'm sorry. Yeah, that's it, sir. Okay. Ms. Walker, Ms. Hookum, public safety.
No report, ma'am.
We do have a report, Ms. Hookum, if you would. The chief of fire services would like to come and make a report.
No reports known to me.
Hey, do you want to pass those out?
Good evening, mayor, council. I would pass out.
What I've just passed out to the members of the council and the mayor is the media advisory concerning the deputy chief selection process. The process is run its course, and we're prepared to make a selection, and that is a media release that'll go out today, and this becomes effective today. Throughout the process, we've had outside chiefs provide their input, screening and interviewing and help through this process, you know, to have an open door policy so we could have input from not just internal but external fire professionals. We reached out to fire chiefs that had excess, on the average, of 20 years of service, but that the fire service to provide their input and give us some insight into the direction we want to go because we want to continue to move the fire department forward. And I think this young man can help us continue to do that as we move forward, making the fire department more proactive instead of reactive, more modernized, more focused on providing customer service to the citizens of Pine Bluff that is needed as we move into the future, especially in our area of emergency medical services. We continue to do more calls year in, year out in that area, emergency medical service. It's not the same fire service we had many years ago. Things have changed, and we have to change with the changes and adapt and change our way of thinking. But real brief, I just want to give a little highlight. The person that's been selected is here in the audience tonight, and his name is Lieutenant Ernest Jones. And that is the person that will be filling the role of deputy fire chief. He has a very impressive background and resume, and I won't read it word for word, but I'll just hit some of the highlights, to highlight some of his qualifications. Lieutenant Jones is a 19-year veteran of the fire service. He's a military veteran. He served in the United States Army as well as the Arkansas National Guard. He's completed his educational process at the University of Arkansas, well, Arkansas Tech University in Russellville, where he earned a bachelor of science in emergency management. He's completed his fire science associate's degree here locally at C.R.C. Arkansas. He's completed the National Registered EMT Program. He's a certified fire investigator. He's certified emergency manager. So he's went through the ranks as far as education and preparing himself, the education and training. He's community oriented. He not only serves in a professional capacity at his work, he serves out in the community. He's active in his church. He's active in programs through the Wesley Chapel Program where he's mentor to youth as they approach college age and want to get involved with bettering themselves. So he not only comes to work and provides customer service, he provides it when he's away from work. He's a team player. He's always willing to chip in and help out whenever we have a project. He served as our emergency manager coordinator. Well, that was a new entity for us, and he was able to acquire quite a bit of money, funding, alternative funding through grants. He's been our primary grant provider for the fire department, where he's acquired over a million dollars in grants and disaster recovery funding that was a great asset to the fire department, allowing us to purchase much-needed equipment and allowed us to increase our staffing through the SAFER grant, where we were able to hire six additional firefighters. So he's been a valuable resource in a number of areas throughout the fire department. He served as our liaison between the human resource on the workers' comp claims whenever we have an injury. He's the person that walks that paperwork to make sure that all the paperwork is documented and continued to get through. He handles our FMLA paperwork, all of that. It's that resource, human resource component. So his potential is unlimited, is what he wants to do within the fire department. So I just want to say that I'm pleased to have him on board as deputy fire chief, and I won't be remiss if I don't mention his family. But he is married to Angela Wilkinson... But he is married to Angela Wilkinson Jones, and he has three children, Justin, Ayton, and Ayla. And his parents are Leroy and Cleo Jones. And some of you may know that Jones is, if I'm not mistaken, he has ties to the Packed Town area. So he has the Jones in the Packed Town area. So he's like myself from this area, and we're glad to be able to see local individuals have a chance to rise up through the ranks and stay here. And we all wanna make Pine Bluff a better place, and I think this person can help us do that. So I'll digress, let him say a few words, and congratulations, Deputy Chief.
All right.
I'd just like to say thank you to Chief Howell, who is trusting me to be his deputy. I'd like to thank the council, the mayor, and all the people that supported me through this process and helped prepare me to stand here before you today. I'd just like to say that we're gonna continue to work hard and serve the citizens of Pine Bluff, and we're gonna keep working to improve every day. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, Chief.
As he echoed, we want to, our whole mission is to continue to serve Pine Bluff and elevate the level of service. But I just wanted to take one moment to make sure I thank all the applicants that applied for this position and went through the process because all of them brought strengths to the table and continue to serve us in their varied positions throughout the department. So all of them have that work within the fire department. So no one was a loser in this race. It was just that only one person could be chosen to serve in this position. But we all had some great candidates to apply for this position, and we continue to look forward to them doing great things also.
All right, thank you, sir. Okay. All right, Ms. Hocken, propose ordinances and resolutions.
I want us to close a portion of the alley located in Block eighteen of Eureka Heights Edition Number Four, between West Thirteenth and Lee Northwest, up for the third and final reading.
I want us to close a portion of the alley located in Block eighteen of Eureka Heights Edition Number Four, between West Thirteenth and Lee Northwest.
Move for adoption?
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded, and ordinance to close a portion of the alley located in Block eighteen of Eureka Heights Edition Number Four. I think what might be helpful to us, Councilman, if you probably would share with us the dialogue that took place between you and Wastewater or...
There was no dialogue between Wastewater and myself or my office.
Summarize the letter to us, then.
Well, what we do is we send out, we fax a copy to the different utility companies, whether they're, and ask them whether they wish, whether they have an opposition to closing the alley. And they'll fax us back with, they'll check in a box, we have an opposition or we have no opposition. And basically, that's what we received back. So there was not a follow-up call to get further explanation as to why they opposed the closing.
I got you. So there's a follow-up call expected to be made?
Yeah, tomorrow, I don't know if it's tomorrow.
Tomorrow?
Yeah.
You have a question, sir?
Is there, is the, is the surer running that alley?
I don't know.
They probably would have to answer that.
Because this doesn't, this doesn't have the normal language in this ordinance about protecting the, any usage by any utilities, which normally are in these.
When you say it doesn't have the verbiage that goes in there?
That any, that any utilities that have access to it, they would still have access. This one does not have that.
Well, the first thing that I want to do is to recommend that unless there's some legal reasons why not, that it goes back to the zoning of the issue here, that has the knowledge of how this thing should be done and that there's some of those issues. You know, unless y'all tell me something, a legal reason why we shifted the responsibility over to the legal department, then I'm gonna highly recommend that we go back to what we were doing the first time. And I think that might be some of the reason, because they are new at this and some things that might have, should have been done was not done. And when we get to the third and final reading of it, and we follow the protocol that has been placed before us, and then that's what my committee was basing it on. You know, I hadn't heard anything about the, about the utility company had had some concerns about the, about the closing of this alley. And, you know, when we go this far, and I don't think it's fair to the citizens of this community that go out and do what they're supposed to do, and then the ball gets dropped here. So therefore, I'm gonna be recommending that we, that we go and close the alley and that maybe in the future, that all the players, we at the table, all the time in the meetings that we have.
Mr. Steps, if you would, let me interject here. And Ms. Roberts, we wanna be as fair to you as we've been fair to any citizen in the community. But, you know, if it's a mistake made because of the process being, not being transparent to everybody that needs to be there, then my suggestion is that we do table this until we have an opportunity to hear from them. There's probably no reason why they would wanna have it closed. You know, but the thing that we're looking to do is make sure that we don't create a problem just because of the fact that the ball was dropped somewhere in the change of guard from zoning to legal. As a matter of fact, my suggestion is just like Alderman Steps, I think legal and zoning should work hand in hand on this matter. Not necessarily one have full responsibility and the other one. Excuse me a second, please. Please, excuse me a second. We're gonna address this in the sense that we address all council meetings, and I think you are familiar with that, that's right. Okay. Yeah, so that's one of the things that we would like to do. Yes, sir.
I'm not against closing now, but I'm against...
That's all we need to do, let us allow the building. Against anything.
I'm against closing it at all.
Yes, sir.
For all the closing, we need to know what.
Mm-hmm. No, I think this is first. Actually, I think this one is supposed to be a public hearing, and the other ones were held. Due to some reason, we had to redraw this one, did we? That's with the... Oh, okay. We got it, but... My, yes, sir.
Was there anything on the, what you sent over to Wastewater that suggested that they should come today?
I don't, I don't believe so. It's just a form, it's just a form, that's it. It didn't say when we're gonna have a meeting as it relates to that, just whether they opposed it or not.
Well, we've had a process that's worked extremely well for a longer year, I've been in this council a long time, and we've all of a sudden changed it, and I still don't understand. But I really hope that we can relook at that, because if this was handled back at the Planning Commission, a lot of that could have been resolved before it ever came here. And that's where it normally had always been done.
I agree.
And I'm not arguing with you at all, I'm just saying...
We just follow the statute, but, I mean, the Planning Commission is one that's had the experience in dealing with this. We are, we've done, you know, Keisha's been great as it relates to checking back with us and that kind of thing. But this fell through the cracks, I apologize for that. And whatever we need to do to rectify that problem, we will do that.
I hope you'll go back and see if there's a way to go back to the Planning Commission. So we don't deal with these out like this. And we deal with this, we're delivering this, and we've got a different set of eyes that look at it. We might have some input from them that could help us to make the right decisions. I used to feel like the old process was much more checks and balances, and I'd like to see us try to go back to that.
Me too.
But we're in discussion. What do you mean, we're in discussion? Yeah, the question is, why would it move from Planning Commission to the other? Well, this is part of the input, I think, if we're just looking to, as the discussion goes.
It, well...
But, I'm sorry? Yeah. That would be my suggestion, is that all the uncertainty that we have, you know, we aren't necessarily trying to stop anything from happening, but we need to understand why things are happening and why they have put forth their position. You know, like you said, we don't know what all that position is included, included in their statement, but we can find that out.
As far as Wastewater?
Yes, as far as Wastewater. And can you possibly have that for us at the next council meeting?
I can have that. And basically, we're just operating based on the statute. The statute basically sets out who's supposed to handle it and what entity or what body is supposed to handle that. And that's how we began doing this. I don't know how the Planning Commission started it to begin with. I don't know how they had that responsibility to begin with, I don't know how they got it. That, yeah.
That's my thinking, well, even if there's a statute, it has a designation that the council could make, and certainly that's what happened when the council designated that, that responsibility to the zoning department.
I don't think there's any legislation.
It's Administration Committee.
Like, we deal with everything it has to do with this.
Okay, but I think it coming, it's coming out of development and planning, right? And what I would suggest, that is go back to development and planning. Yeah, develop, go back to development and planning, let the legal department, as well as zoning and regional planning, possibly come and discuss this matter and hopefully give us some understanding of the reason for them putting the statement forth that they did. You know, it might be a legitimate reason, it might just be a reason that they would like to communicate with the property owners in that area to just make sure that they understand that, you know, no fences can be put up. If they need access to it, then you can't put a fence. The way it reads right now, a fence can be put in the alley if we vote on that, right?
Yes.
If we vote to approve that. So that would be my concern. Mr. Steps, would you and your committee have a issue with maybe sending it back to the committee?
I got a problem with all of the doggies here. But the thing that really concerns me more than anything is the protocol that we're dealing with. And when you got the taxpayers that has come and made a presentation, what's the situation? Now, if the petitioner, if she were to make the request, that's what she wanted to do, I would have known, I'd make a... Were we talking about two weeks, okay?
The next council, November what? You can't come in and speak on this issue. You can't come in and speak on this issue. All right, Wayne had to step away for a second, he's... Yes, you were right. That's right. You were right. But we don't, Councilman, Eastley, to come back, he said he'd step away for a second. Yeah, on a subject matter like this, we don't take comments from the floor, you know, because it probably should have been spoken, sir, during the public hearing. You know, the council is right to make an exception to this. Alderman Brown, is from, Pastor Wilkins wanted to speak on this matter, told me he helped take us. The... Wayne, Pastor Wilkins wanted to have us speak, would like to speak to this matter, and we pulled in everybody.
Everything else been out of order, I don't know why not. We don't do anything else by the way.
Pastor Wilkins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council, I'll be brief. I'm certain I might be incorrect, but I thought that your rules allowed you to allow a change of order when needed and when practicable for the purpose of doing whatever it is that the council is trying to achieve. And since there seemed to be quite a bit of disconsternation about this issue, let me just say this. Number one, as I understand state law, no easement will be affected by your closing of the alley. Number two, because you have citizens who have done what they were supposed to do, it's not their fault if somebody else didn't do what they were supposed to do. If you're gonna have a meeting in a couple of weeks, what's wrong if you're on the third reading with the council passing this? Certainly fences, driveways, buildings would not be built before the council has an opportunity to hear from Wastewater and see what their concerns are. And I'm certain that, I'm certain that the reasonable citizens would respond to those in a reasonable manner. And it seems to me that that way, it's a win-win situation. So I wanted to offer that to the council.
Okay.
And I know it's none of my business, but I do know that an easement is not lost when you close an alley.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All righty. Yeah, you're absolutely right, it doesn't go in effect for thirty days. Well, you know, I still like to address, you know, Ms. Hocken and Alderman Steps with the fact that if it's feasible, you know, to delay this until the next council meeting in order that we've had an opportunity to address it, and then Steps, your committee would have a chance to meet him between then and there, and they would have an opportunity to address it. You know, I understand that this is just a change of process, and it fell through the cracks during the change of process. You know... You know, two, two wrongs don't make a right. That's why we're trying to really-
You still have thirty days before it goes into effect. And we would have had a chance to meet with it. I think that's proper that we go ahead and vote on this issue tonight. And then within the thirty days, if there's some things that comes up there, I think this council will have an opportunity to come back and make your decision at that time.
Are there any other comments?
It's time to vote. Been on this about thirty minutes.
All right, hearing no other comments. All in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposes?
No.
Okay. The motion pairs seven more. All righty, let's move on to number two, Ms. Hooken.
I have an ordinance amending Article three of Part thirteen of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas concerning the basis for calculating the city's privilege and occupation tax for daycare and childcare centers up for the second reading.
An ordinance amending Article three of Part thirteen of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas concerning the basis for calculating the city's privilege and occupation tax for daycare and childcare centers.
Place it on the calendar.
Before, before you do that, I will let Mr. Mitch reflect.
Is, is he then taking it to committee?
Right.
Mr. Reed, this is the council. We have been in constant contact with the Department of, we've been in constant contact- We have been in constant communication with the Department of Human Services concerning this issue over a pretty, pretty extended period of time. The several daycares in the City of Pine Bluff, we have approximately forty-nine daycares here. The issue that we have here is that when, when daycares are assessed their occupation license, that license is based on the maximum number of children that that daycare can handle. Several of the daycares have reiterated repeatedly that during the course of the year, the number of kids tend to fluctuate, and that that assessment is, is, is not representative of a true assessment in terms of what they should owe. The particular issue has been brought to the attention of the Department of Human Services across several counties, and they actually met with the Department of Human Services in Little Rock to, to find out how the City of Pine Bluff will address this. The Department of Human Services also communicated to us that they would provide to us a more reasonable number, the average number of children maintained at the daycare versus the maximum number that the daycare can hold. And what they, what they've also indicated to us is that they typically make visitations to each one of the daycare on the course of about three times per year. And, and they will give us the, the number of daycares in Jefferson County, the number of kids maintained at each daycare in Jefferson County, including Pine Bluff, and that they would provide to us on an annual basis the report telling us what each daycare is responsible for. And so we have, we have, we have basically indicated to them that if they were to provide us that list, and, and if it were acceptable to the daycares here in the city, we would use a different assessment as a metric in determining a, a, a more fair assessment to them. What we have, what's been proposed here in the current ordinance is that we maintain a, a weekly attendance record, which I think is a little, little excessive for the number of daycares and the number of children, and for each one of those daycares to provide to us an enrollment. And so we would certainly like to at least give the Department of Human Services an opportunity to, to provide an assessment that's, that's fair to, to the City of Pine Bluff and also to the daycares themselves.
When you think that might take place?
Well, they, they, they have indicated they would like to meet with us to, 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 to basically indicate how, you know, their assessments are done. We have a couple of different billing periods. We, we bill annually at the beginning of the year, and we bill annually at the, during mid-year. And so what they have indicated is that they will, they would do a calendar year assessment for each one of the daycares. And at the end of the year, they would provide to us what the average of that daycare is at the, at the end of the year, and so that we can do the assessment based on that end of year, end of year average. And they've given me a report here, a sample of a report at least. Yeah, they did tell us they were going to provide some information today, but unfortunately we got the information a little, a little late. So, but they will be in, in communication with us throughout the week and up until our next council meeting, trying to have some communication.
The Department of Human Services is going to do an evaluation, come back and look at what that average is over the year.
Yes.
Based on a month basis?
Yeah, ba, well, they, they, they do three visits per year. That's, that's, that's the state regulation. So they, they actually do the count currently. So what they're going to do is provide us the count that they currently take.
So we will have that, what do you expect to happen?
We, we expect that report to be given to us, you know, at the end of every year. Well, well, we can negotiate that with them, you know, what, what, what's going to be suitable for us to make sure that we can obtain that prior to our billing period. I actually think that the provision of average number by DHS is fair, fair to the daycare, and we will also get that, you know, I've been in communication with them. They, they do not impose the rate that it's charged. They, they, they impose the number of children under fifty percent. And typically, they also have capabilities when, when, when DHS basically maximizes the number of kids that a facility can hold, they actually have the capability of changing that maximum number. Let's say a, a daycare can hold a hundred kids, but the, but the, but the owner can say, well, we, we, we only want to maintain fifty kids so that maximum number can be fifty. It's always at the discretion of the daycare to, to tell DHS what that number is. That, 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 that's all under the, the curvy of the owner of that daycare. But could the maximum lie about the state? No, they pay, they, they, they will pay for, our new proposal is that they pay for the average over, over the three visitations. Well, they're going to tell, they're going to tell DHS, we're going to get the number from DHS. So the communication, as far as what they tell us-
Can we not have a representative of DHS attend that meeting, and you attend it also, sir?
Yes, yeah, absolutely.
So that we can have, have a thorough discussion about this?
Yeah.
We discussed it, I'll just, I don't know, everybody that had a question can go here with their questions.
Yeah, yeah, but I think it's a proper place for that.
But we've already discussed about, about the average, and I think with the, with the DHS going out three times a year, and it, it's going to be fair to this, to the city and to the daycare owners. And so I think that's going to be proper, proper way to do it, but I think that I have a meeting, we can invite the daycare owners, and they can be present, they, they got a question, they can do it, so we, we-
Okay, so can, can we either send this to your committee prior to the third reading?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. All right, thank you, sir. So we're going to send that to this committee?
Right.
Okay. All right, yeah, Ms. Hooken?
An ordinance providing for the rezoning of certain territory in the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, eleven fifteen Commerce Road up for the second reading.
An ordinance providing for the rezoning of certain territory in the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, eleven fifteen Commerce Road.
Place it on the calendar. Have an ordinance consenting to change, the change of control of the cable television franchise up for the second reading.
An ordinance consenting to the change of control of the cable television franchise.
Place it on the calendar. Have an ordinance to-
Ms. Hooken, is that going to committee?
That's the one that's going to, huh? That's the one we'll be discussing, I believe.
Okay, we'll send to committee.
Send to committee, yes, sir. Okay.
Hopefully.
No, you send to committee. Yeah, committee meeting.
Okay.
This is the Committee of Public Works? Yes.
Okay.
Ten thirty on the twenty-third.
Ten thirty on the twenty-third. Yes, sir.
We have an ordinance to close a portion of Clark Drive in the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas up for the first reading.
Whereas a petition was duly filed in the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas to close a portion of Clark Drive, one hundred and fifty-nine point four ninety-four feet, located between Block nineteen, Lot thirteen of the Eden Park addition to the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, and the property located at eleven, excuse me, nine oh three West Forty-first Avenue, Jefferson County, Pine Bluff, Arkansas. And whereas, after proper notice as required by law, the city has heard all persons desiring to be heard on the question, and has ascertained that a portion of the street herein described has herefore been dedicated to the public, to use as a public street, and that the public interest and welfare will not be adversely affected by the aforementioned closing of, closing a portion of said street. Now therefore be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, Section One, that the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas hereby releases, vacates, and abandons all its rights together with the rights of the public generally in and to the portion of the street designated as follows. The portion of Clark Drive, one hundred and fifty-nine point ninety-four feet, located between Block nineteen, Lot thirteen of Eden Park addition to the City of Pine Bluff, and the property located at nine oh three West Forty-first Avenue, Jefferson County, Pine Bluff. A copy of this ordinance is duly certified by the clerk and shall be filed in the Office of the Recorder of Jefferson County and recorded in the Diet of Records of the County, that all ordinances, ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith are hereby repealed to the extent of such conflict.
Has it been just a meeting?
No.
Okay, we send this to the committee?
Committee, yes.
Okay. Have an ordinance providing for the reimbursement of police officers for the expense of, of repair or replacement uniforms damaged or destroyed in the line of duty.
Whereas, police uniforms are expensive, and in cases where an officer's uniform is damaged or destroyed in the line of duty, if it is proper for the police department to reimburse the officer of the cost of the repair or replacement of the uniform, now therefore be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, Section One, whenever the uniform of a police officer shall be damaged or destroyed due to an incident occurring while the officer is acting in the line of duty, the police department shall reimburse the officer for the cost of repairing, repairing or replacing the uniform. This reimbursement shall be in addition to any uniform allowance paid police officers. Any payment by a third party to compensate for damage or destruction to the uniform in the form of restitution or otherwise shall be paid over to the police department whenever the department has reimbursed the officer for the expense. Section Two, the chief of police may promulgate regulations consistent with the purpose of this ordinance to efficiently carry out the provisions hereof.
I have a question. Shouldn't fire be added to that, okay?
Yeah, yeah.
Damage?
They could, they could add to that, yeah.
Modify that?
Yeah, modify.
Yeah, modify.
Who, who's the sponsor?
I, I sponsor.
So you modify that, and then we'll send it to public, public safety, but, for the November fifth meeting?
Right.
All righty. Yes.
Or does that start it over?
No, 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 it's fine, just modify.
We have an ordinance requiring certain commercial establishments to install and maintain surveillance cameras inside the store for the protection of the public and employees.
Whereas the City Council finds that the occurrence of robbery at fast food restaurants, filling stations, and convenience stores poses great danger to the public, which patronizes and the employees which run these commercial establishments. And whereas, it is further found that the installation and maintenance of surveillance cameras inside the establishment would serve to deter robbery as well as provide valuable video evidence to identify and apprehend an offender. Now therefore be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, Section One, definitions. Restaurant, fast food, and filling station means all establishments falling within the definition of said entities found in Section twenty-nine dash two of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Pine Bluff. Convenience store, B, convenience store includes filling station and other establishments in which, in addition to selling gasoline products, also sell fast food, snacks, tobaccos, products, soft drinks, alcoholic beverages, and other items. Such establishments may be called J-Marts, Buzz Buys, truck stops, or similar descriptions. Section Two, surveillance cam, cameras required. Every restaurant, fast food, filling station, and convenience stores shall have installed and shall, and shall maintain good, in good working order, one or more surveillance cameras providing a clear and unobstructed view of the checkout slash cash registers area of the establishment with sufficient lighting to recognize the face of the customer and clerk. The video recorded by the cameras shall be maintained by the store for at least thirty days in a, in digital or other format readily accessible. Section Three, responsibility for compliance. The owner, operator, manager, or clerk on duty shall be responsible for ensuring that the establishment complies with the provisions of this ordinance and may be cited for any violation hereof. Section Four, noncompliance unlawful. It shall be unlawful and a misdemeanor for an owner, operator, manager, or clerk on duty of a restaurant, fast food, filling station, or other convenience store to be open for business to the public if not in compliance with the requirements of this ordinance. Section Five, penalty. A person convicted of violating the requirements of this ordinance shall be fined not less than three hundred nor more than a thousand for each five, a thousand dollars for each violation. A separate and discreet violation occurs each day that the individual operates an establishment that is out of compliance. Section Six, verification. A covered establishment shall verify annually its occupation and privilege tax that is due and that is in compliance with the requirements of this ordinance.
Okay, this ordinance going to Public Safety Committee. We will have a meeting on November fifth. If you have anything that you would like to interject, a man or whatever, you come to that meeting. Because the following, when we get ready to vote on it, when you bring it back out on the floor, we don't intend to sit here a half hour picking it apart. So if you have any, anything that you want to say about it, come to that meeting and come on time, and we will get it done. Because I don't intend to spend thirty minutes talking about the ordinance on the floor.
That's correct. Let me just add this to it because I have several constituents. By no means do we mean for this to be a monetary thing for the city, or just for the safety of the employers and the citizens at that sharp location. And thirdly, I know one of the things that would probably want to address, because I don't want to mandate that put burden on the employer that has these establishments, certainly one of the things that I think would probably, that I would want to talk, talk about in the meetings, that there may be penalties might be excessive. And so certainly those are things that the citizens need to come to the committee to discuss with Public Safety Committee.
It's okay with the committee members, I'd like to change, change at time, three thirty, because we have several things to discuss. We've got at least two ordinances we need to discuss. And each, each department that comes under the auspices of Public Safety, usually, each department has a driven report. So it's three thirty, and we have ample time to go through it.
Ms. Hooken, let me also suggest that zoning, the zoning official participate in this meeting, as well as Director of Inspection and Zoning, make sure that he's aware of the time of the meeting. Make sure that he's aware of the time of the meeting and participate. And Chief, let me suggest that the fire marshal and whoever else has responsibility for inspection of commercial establishments participate in this as well. And Chief, I think you and I had a dialogue earlier today, that the police department needs to find out how comparable communities are handling this matter, and if so, bring to the table any recommendations or suggestions that they might have. We've got all Public Safety to take care of that with inspection as well. And so everybody should have some input. And I think, Alderman Stepp, you said that you think citizens, store owners-
Right, because the gas store owners, and they come to the meeting, and they're not going to already see it, and they get on the floor and get to the door.
I think it's best that they understand it. So, Ms. Hill, let me suggest that you probably get some documentation or announcement out to most of the retail establishments that would be affected by this particular ordinance, or that they can come and have some input.
Got it.
Okay. All righty.
It was three weeks.
Three weeks? Yeah. Yes. Okay, Ms. Hogan.
Okay, have a resolution directing the city clerk to publish notice of public hearing on closing a portion of Clark Drive in the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas.
Whereas a petition was duly filed with the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, to close a portion of Clark Drive, 159.94 feet, located between Block 19-
Need for adoption?
It's moved in properly second that a resolution directing the city clerk to publish notice of a public hearing on closing a portion of Clark Drive in the City of Pine Bluff. We've kind of discussed this matter up earlier. Is there any additional matters to cover on Clark Drive? If not, all in favor of the resolution, let it be known by saying aye. Any opposers? Motion carries eight zero.
Have a resolution authorizing the mayor to contract with Craig Brumley Construction, Inc., for work concerning the Pine Bluff Highway 63 sewer extension project.
Whereas the city and wastewater utility are currently engaged in an extension of sanitary sewer along the United States Highway 63 corridor south, and whereas bids were solicited to perform certain aspects of the needed work for the extension, and whereas the firm of Craig Brumley Construction Incorporated of Hot Springs, Arkansas, submitted the lowest bid, most responsible bid, most responsible bid to perform the work outlined in the bid solicitation documents, and is recommended by the project manager to be awarded the contract. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, that the mayor is hereby authorized and directed to execute one or more documents to constitute a contract with Craig Brumley Construction Incorporated of Hot Springs, Arkansas, to perform the outline, the work outlined in the bid solicitation documents for the sanitary sewer extension project along US Highway 63 South for the consideration of $252,740.15 as provided in its bid. The city clerk shall attest the mayor's signature as needed.
Need for adoption?
It's been moved in properly second that a resolution authorizing the mayor to contract with Craig Brumley Construction, Inc., work concerning the Pine Bluff Highway 63 sewer extension project. Most of you attended the work that's taking place out there. This is phase two that's taking place. Each of you have a copy of the bid records that's taking place out there. I'll entertain any questions that you might have on this matter. Hearing non, all in favor? Yes.
These were the bids.
These are the bids.
Have we checked any person's record of their work?
Mr. Matthews, you would speak to this matter? Ms. Walker, normally we go through the proper channels and procedures that we have to prior to presenting a bid.
All right, ma'am, both questions. Good evening, everyone.
Ms. Walker, you going to address that question with it?
Yes, I was just asking, did you review or inspect any of their work that they had done previously?
Yes, we went through the process. In the bid documents, they were required to give references on projects with similar size and scope of companies or reference companies on projects. Did background check with companies and cities that they had worked for, to see if there's a good reason to be involved with companies, engineers, or other people that have done that work.
And I have one other question. Do we have any respective businesses or-
We have heard from quite a few around town, and I'm not quite sure about that, but we have heard that they wanted to relocate in Pine Bluff.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other questions? Hearing non, all in favor of the resolution, let it be known by saying aye. Any opposers? The motion carries eight zero. Ms. Hogan?
Have a resolution declaring certain houses, buildings, and all structures as nuisance and ordering their fate.
Whereas the city council has determined-
Second.
It's moved in properly second. Mr. Stepp, I think that comes to you. You had a list of-
Oh, yeah, I have an amendment that has been removed, five of them.
Okay, the all in favor of the amendment as presented, let it be known by saying aye. Any opposers? Here, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Move for the original as amended.
I had a question on that. On that one, there was a Martin-
Who?
That was a Martin.
It's on the list? Are you familiar with what you're speaking of, Ms. Ruth? Ms. Ruth, would you please come up to the mic, ma'am?
Martin Martin. What was your name, Mrs.? That contacted me that my mother couldn't be here because she was-
Martin Jenkins?
Jenkins. Yeah, Jenkins. There was a, they was hoping they'd get a permit today, and they're not going to even get a permit in the morning. I would like for it to stay on the, on the, uh, downhill, but we'll allow them to get the permit and allow them six days to go home and practice. And now even getting a day because she had to take her mother to the doctor.
Okay. Well, that would be my suggestion, let's stay on the list. And then if they come to purchase a permit, let us know, and we'll get one to them. We'll go on like that. Okay, so we are, Ms. Hogan, again, the joint.
Yeah, I made a motion.
You made the motion. We got a second?
Right.
Okay, any discussion? On the original. Right. Okay, the original as amended, yes. All in favor of the original as amended, let it be known by saying aye. Any opposers? All right, the motion carries eight zero.
That's all I have for ordinances and resolutions. Are we going to recommend the students to sit here?
Yes, good. Professor, I've forgotten your name. What was it, what's her name?
Greg Ragland.
Greg Ragland. Professor Ragland?
Introduce yourself and your students.
Yes.
Yes.
Please come to the mic, sir. They come with you. All righty. Chief, I'll let you do this announcement.
I said earlier, my name is Greg Ragland.
Turn around where they can be seen.
Both of them.
Yeah, my name is Greg Ragland. I'm with the political science program at University of Arkansas, Pine Bluff, and I'm a student.
Steve, Steve.
You know, they have some of our upperclassmen, so I know they got enough to introduce themselves. But this is one of the core requirements of state and local governor, and I don't know what we've done in the past, but I told them that I would go with them tonight, and I wanted them to get a good taste of what really goes on in the city council meeting, so they can see their government and work. And they can also, in my position, any one of these days, they can be sitting up there.
Absolutely.
Hello, everybody. My name is Jeremy Myers from Memphis, Tennessee. I'm a secondary education and social studies major at University of Arkansas.
Thank you, Jeremy.
Hello, my name is Erica Collins. I'm from Kansas City, Missouri, a political science major at the University of Arkansas. Junior.
Yes, Ms. Collins, thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Carlton Brewer from the great city of Pine Bluff, Arkansas. I'm a junior major in political science, and I'm also the vice president of the Student Government Association.
Yes, Collins, good to see you.
I want to give a special mention to all the student names. I made a contact with student names. She's the classmate of mine.
Yes.
I don't know if I didn't know. Anyway, I want to contribute a little bit to them.
Absolutely.
I want to just argue and everything, and we just really thank you all.
Thank you, Professor. And at any time that you think your class could benefit or add value to the process here of municipal government, please don't hesitate to bring them. And we like to encourage each and every one of you to get involved in your communities. It's extremely important that individuals like you be involved in decision-making and provide leadership to people of our community. Thank you very much.
If you need some speakers, you can add all of these people that love to talk.
Starting with her.
But I'm not sure his lecture time's long enough for any of us.
We thank you all so much.
Thank you very much, sir. I'll entertain a motion. Oh, oh, yeah, we've moved in properly second that we're joining this meeting.